Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 6 o'clock. This is the May 18th, 2020 Clovis City Council meeting. And I'd like to welcome you to tonight's meeting. Given the current shelter in place order covering the state of California and the social distancing guidelines issued by the federal, state, and local authorities, the city is implementing the following changes to participate in council meetings until notified otherwise. The council chambers will be open to the public, but we will be implementing social distancing policies and will limit the number of people who may be in the council chambers. We are encouraging residents to participate virtually, following the directions below. If you are sick, please do not attend the meeting. Any member of the city council may participate from a remote location by teleconference. The meetings will be webcast and accessed at the link shown on the screen. Regards to written comments, members of the public are encouraged to submit written comments at the link listed, at least one hour before the meeting, 5:00 p.m. You will be prompted to provide the council meeting date, item number, name, email, and comment. Please submit separate forms for each item which you're commenting on. A copy of your written comment will be provided to the city council noting the item number. If you wish to make a verbal comment, please follow the instructions below. Please specify if you would like to have your written comment read into the record. If so, the comment will be read into the record during the public comment portion when the item is heard. Any portion of your comments extending past three minutes may not be read aloud due to time restrictions, but will be made part of the record of the proceedings. Please be aware that any written comments received that do not specify a particular agenda item will be placed within the public comments portion of the agenda. If a written comment is received after 5:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting, efforts will be made to provide the comment to the city council during the meeting. However, staff cannot guarantee that the written comments received after 5:00 p.m. will be provided to the council during the meeting. All written comments received prior to the end of the meeting will be made part of the record of the proceedings. Verbal comments. If you wish to speak to the council on an item by telephone, you should contact the city clerk at (559) 324-2060, no later than 5:00 p.m. the day of the meeting. You will be asked to provide your name, phone number, and your email. You will be emailing instructions to log into WebEx to participate in the meeting. Staff recommends participants log into WebEx at 5:30 the day of the meeting to perform an audio check. All callers will be placed on mute and, at the appropriate time for your comment, your microphone will be unmuted. You will be able to speak to the council for up to three minutes. WebEx participation. Reasonable efforts will be made to allow written and verbal comments from a participant communicating with the host of the virtual meeting. To do so, a participant will need to chat with the host and request to make a written or verbal comment. The host will make a reasonable effort to make written and verbal comments available to the council. Due to the new untested format of these meetings, the city cannot guarantee that these written or verbal comments initiated via chat will occur. Participants desiring to make a verbal comment via chat will need to ensure that they have accessed the meeting with the audio transmission capabilities. And I will call the meeting to order and ask council member one or two to lead us in a flag float.
If you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Salute.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Von. If the clerk will call roll, please.
Councilor Ashbeck?
I'm here.
Councilor Flores?
Here.
Councilor Moana Tua?
Here.
Councilor Wayland?
Here.
Mayor Besseger?
Here.
Now we come to the public comment portion of the meeting. This is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the council on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Is there anyone inside council chambers who would like to address the council on any item of public interest? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, do we have any written comments that have been submitted?
We have the four that are presented before you, none of which request to be read into the record, so I have no further public comment.
Do we have any WebEx comments?
There are none.
Okay, I will close public comments. In regards to ordinances and resolutions with respect to the approval of resolutions and ordinances, the reading of the title shall be deemed a motion to waive the reading of the complete resolution or ordinance, and unless there is a request by a council member that the resolution or ordinance be read in full, further reading of the resolution or ordinance shall be deemed waived by the unanimous consent of the council. Now we come to the consent calendar. Items considered routine in nature are placed upon the consent calendar. They will all be considered and voted upon in one vote as one item unless a council member requests individual consideration. A council member's vote in favor of the consent calendar is considered and recorded as in a separate affirmative vote in favor of each action listed. Motions in favor of the adoption of the consent calendar are deemed to include a motion to waive the reading of any ordinance or resolution on the consent calendar. For adoption of ordinances, only those that have received a unanimous vote upon introduction are considered consent items. Does any member of the council wish to have an item on the consent calendar poll?
I do. I would like to pull item 16 and request that you, as mayor, read the proclamation in respect for our work with these workers, Public Works. Would you be willing to oblige?
Very good, Mayor. With the exception of item 16, is there any other item that any council member wishes to pull? Any member of the public wish to pull any item on the consent calendar? Have we had any via WebEx?
None.
Okay. I would entertain a motion on everything but number 16.
I move that we approve the consent calendar with the exception of item 16.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Will the clerk call roll, please?
Councilor Ashbeck?
Aye.
Councilor Flores?
Aye.
Councilor Moana Tua?
Aye.
Councilor Wayland?
Aye.
Mayor Besseger?
Aye. Item 16 is a proclamation for National Public Works Week 2020. We're all very proud of the work that our Public Works Department does every single day in the city. It's one of the things that sometimes you don't realize they're there until things stop working, and then you are very happy that they're there. So this is a city proclamation, City of Clovis proclamation, National Public Works Week 2020, whereas the public works services in our community are a vital and integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the American Public Works Association has chosen the rhythm of public works as a theme for this year's National Public Works Week to highlight the quality of life public works provides to communities, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operations of public work systems and programs, and whereas the health, safety, and quality of life of this community greatly depends on public works facilities and services, and whereas the city is proud of its public infrastructure and the men and women who are dedicated to its design, construction, operation, maintenance, preservation, and improvement, and whereas the city seeks to raise the public's awareness of public works issues. Now therefore be resolved that the City of Clovis does hereby proclaim the week of May 17th through the 23rd, 2020, as National Public Works Week in the City of Clovis, and encourages all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in building and maintaining our public works, and to recognize the contribution which public works employees make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. And witness therefore, I hereunto set my hand to cause the official seal of the City of Clovis to be fixed this 18th day of May 2020, and it's my pleasure to do so. Thank you for asking me to pull that, Von. That's a good thing.
And if I may, look, this is usually the week we get that barbecue, and please send, I think, our heartfelt appreciation, as the mayor stated, to all the men and women in Public Works, and hopefully, if it's not this year, then it may be delayed, if not, then we'll wait till next May to get our barbecue again. So, thank you.
I will pass on those sentiments. They're actually doing a to-go boxes, lunch boxes, because we can't get everybody together, so they're just going to make lunch for everybody and give it to them on their way out of the yard. So it'll be less than our usual, but hopefully next year we're back to full swing.
Thank you. Now we come to the public hearings portion of the meeting. A public hearing is an open consideration within a regular or special meeting of the city council, for which special notice has been given and may be required. When the public hearing is continued, noticing of the adjourned item is required as per Government Code 54955.1. Item 17, consider introduction of an ordinance, 2019-009, a request to approve a rezone of approximately four acres of property located at the southwest corner of Temperance and Nees, to be consistent with the underlying general plan designation of MUBC, Mixed Use Business Campus. This request is to rezone the subject property from RA, Single Family Residential Very Low Density Zone District, to the CP, Professional Office Zone District. Field Property Incorporated, property owner, legacy construction applicant, and Lily Shaw is our presenter. Lily?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. Rezone, the applicant is requesting approval of rezone 2019-009 for the purpose of the development of the project site. As Mayor indicated, the project site is located at the southwest corner of Nees and Temperance Avenue. It's about four acres in area and is currently vacant. However, prior to this, the, prior to the property being vacant, it had once housed a single-family residence with characteristics very similar to those semi-royal residential properties you see scattered in this area. Sorry, thank you. The property is a little interesting in that it's almost like an island bounded by Nees Avenue to the north, Temperance Avenue to its east, and the Enterprise Canal along its west. It has one true adjacent parcel, which is the parcel to its south, that makes up just about under an acre in area. This area in the city is a little unique in that it is an area that's developed out. However, there are still some properties that have not been developed to their full potential. Regarding development, council will find areas indicated in yellow here are single-family residential subdivisions. Dry Creek Elementary School is located to the northwest of the project site, and the Portal Sierra 1 and 2 business campuses are located south of the project site, as indicated in that pink boundary. There's also a planned commercial center located to the southeast of that. And then, of course, south of Bolivio Avenue is Fire Station 5 and the recently completed California Health Science University. Areas that are not indicated are those areas, those properties that have not been developed to their full potential. A little bit on the history of this area here. In 1996, council approved reorganization 193, otherwise known as the Nees and Temperance Reorganization, that annexed about 386 acres of properties, including the project site, into the city's limits. These once-royal residential properties have now, for the most part, been developed to single-family residential subdivisions. Moving forward, in 1999, council approved GPA 9905, which encompasses about 180 acres in this blue boundary here. And that was an endeavor or an economic project that is known as the Research and Technology Park, specifically Phases 1 and 2 of the RT Park. These properties were redesignated from various land use designations to the mixed-use business campus designation. Again, that was an endeavor to promote economic and fiscal vitality by providing for land uses that are employment generating. A little bit about the Research and Technology Business Park. Again, Phases 1 and 2, as bounded in the blue area there, was approved with GPA 9905. In 2001, council also approved rezone 2001-04 that redesignated the subject properties, they're zone districts anyway, from the various different zone districts to the RT Park Zone District, as well as the RA Park, the RA Zone District. The RA Zone District really was intended as a placeholder zone district that'll allow the residential uses to continue until development is proposed. Phase 3 of the Research and Technology Park was approved in 2009 with GPA 2009-01, coupling with ordinance of amendment 2009-03 that approved this area of Phase 3 as Mixed Use Area 4E. And going back, Phases 1 and 2 was approved as Mixed Use Area 36 in the city's last general plan. That being said, mixed-use areas are areas that provide for unique designations and development standards, and allows for better coordination when it comes to land uses and development with various properties under different ownership. Moving forward to 2014, with the city's general plan update, the majority of the mixed-use areas were reestablished as focus areas in the city's updated general plan. Council will find that Mixed Use Area 4E, which encompassed Phase 3 of the RT Park, was carried over as Focus Area 6. After some deliberation, it was determined that Mixed Use Area 36 will not be carried over as a focus area, however, be maintained its establishment as a mixed-use business campus. So the business campus remains. And the purpose of that was because the mixed-use business campus designation, although it carries various other zone districts, those zone districts also provide for economic employment and employment opportunities. So that brings us to our proposed project here. The applicant, who is legacy construction, is proposing development of the project site in two phases. The first phase will be for the use of a medical office, and at this point, the second phase does not have a user or a development schedule. Development of this project requires that the property is rezoned to a zone district that corresponds or is consistent with the city's general plan land use designation of mixed-use business campus. With that, the applicant has agreed to develop this project per, consistent with standards and guidelines of the Research and Technology Park. Council may be aware of some of those outstanding characteristics of the RT Park as the minimum building size of 10,000 square feet, and of course, the infamous RT Park architectural guidelines. At this point, the applicant has not provided or has not submitted for a site plan review. However, with approval of this rezone, the applicant will work to further refine their site plan and provide elevations consistent with the RT Park area for submittal. In regards to land use consistency, the city's general plan calls out the project site as a mixed-use business campus, as indicated in Figure LU2. Its corresponding table, which is Table LU2, provides a description of typical uses for the mixed-use business campus, which indicates higher intensity mix of employment generating businesses drawing from land uses permitted in the office and industrial designations. Additionally, Table LU3 of the city's general plan, or the land use element of the city's general plan, indicates the general plan and zoning consistency for the mixed-use business campus designation, and consistent zoning, including administrative professional office, which is the CP Zone District, and all industrial zone districts, as well as the urban center or UC Zone District. With that, the applicant's request to redesign the subject property to the CP Zone District or Professional Office Zone District is consistent with the city's current general plan. And the CP Zone District allows for several different types of office uses, including administrative, corporate, financial, government, and medical offices. As indicated, the applicant has not submitted for site plan review, however, did provide this general conceptual of the potential site layout of the project. Council will see that access is proposed on both Nees and Temperance Avenues, and both buildings proposed meet the minimum building size requirement of intent of the RT Park Zone District. In consideration of the future development of the project, south of the project site, staff has, staff has provided that the applicant, has required that the applicant provide an irrevocable offer of reciprocal access with that property, and the intent of that was to omit the number of driveways onto Temperance Avenue when this, when the sites itself do develop, and also to ensure that there's seamless development between these two sites. The existing residents on the southern property will be able to remain until development is proposed. With that, staff and planning commission recommends that council approve rezone 2019-009, subject to its associated conditions of approval. This concludes my report, and I am open for questions.
Thank you, Lily. Any questions for staff?
I got it. Von. Lily, on the RT Park where Precision Plastics came in, where the boundary of Northwood Estates and RT Park, there's a trail that is proposed there, and we kind of talked about that. Can you share where that trail goes, and if this project is going to give anything to that trail? Because I think along the north end of the Enterprise Canal there, people are using it as a trail, and I think it kind of just, does it just end technically at Nees? And can you talk about just the trail amenities?
Sure.
Any connectivity, or is this kind of out of the way and it's not connecting?
So, let me see if I could find a, okay, so that trail system, that trail system comes up here and will traverse this way, sorry, I'm a little shaky. So I do understand that north of Nees Avenue, a lot of these residents here do utilize that, this area here as a trail, and yes, it is designated as a trail in the city's general plan. However, I forget what year was modified. That trail system was intended to come along here, along the Enterprise Canal, but with some concerns about crossing midway here, it was redesignated to come along this way down here and reconnect through the Enterprise Canal there.
So the frontage, the Temperance frontage, I think the sidewalk right now, that's sufficient, you're saying, to accommodate sort of what you just said, where the trail goes along the north end and then goes back, crosses Nees south?
Yes.
Okay. So we're not requiring anything more than just whatever the bike lane and sidewalk?
Right. So if there are any further findings, those will be added during the site plan review from both planning and engineering divisions.
Okay. Because of what you just said, if they can contribute something to make it where someone knows, "I have to go to the light, head south, and that's where the trail is," something in, when staff reviews it, I think that'll be very helpful, so that way people aren't just coming south and kind of go, "Okay, where do we go? Where's the connection of the trail?" Because the RT Park, the connection's way in the back, and so no one knows that connection as well. So if it goes south, I don't know if they cross Temperance to go along the canal again, or do they go down and then go take, cross it during, I don't know if there's a connection there, but, right, where the RT Park, you said it goes across and then it goes to, across Temperance along the north end of the RT Park? Can you show again where Northwood Estates?
Uh-huh.
It goes up, and then you say it goes along the property. So the intent is that it crosses Temperance there?
Um, you know, I'm not completely certain where the crossing is proposed, but I will ensure that we do.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, take a look at that.
That's important, because I think that will lead to the potential future bridge, correct? If I, so that, I just want to make it where if we're going to plan, then the bridge is going to be very important to us, and so somehow make it all connect, that's all.
Absolutely. I understand. You want to make it identifiable.
Yeah.
Yes, and that's something that the planning division is really keen on attempting to do as well.
Excellent.
So we'll ensure that that's incorporated.
Okay, thank you. Lynn, did you have anything?
No, thank you. My questions are about the property, the remainder of property to the south, but Lily did a nice job answering that. Thank you.
Okay. Bob?
I guess my question is, kind of just piggybacking on what Von said, if we did decide that it would be a good idea for us to have that eastern portion of the Enterprise Canal built out as a trail, as a portion of the trail set, system, would this be the moment in the process that we would have them set funds aside, or at least be alerted that that may be a condition at some point in the future? Or is that, are we just saying site plan review? Because I do, I do think that regardless of what we may want, the people are going to continue to use that portion of the Enterprise Canal, and there, I think we've got to figure out a way to accommodate that being a part of our trail system. So when would it be that we would make sure that they either set funds aside for that purpose or start to develop it out? Would it be at this, at this stage?
Well, I don't think that I know how to answer your question, Mr. Wayland, but I'll see if Dave can help me out with that one.
I think at this point, we're collectively uncertain that the trail alignment runs along the west side of Temperance, that location, or whether it crosses and runs along the east side of Temperance. I think staff feels comfortable that the, if it runs along the site frontage on the west side of Temperance, that we can incorporate that as a condition of development with the site plan review. And if it's a fair share payment, then that would be also a standard condition that's applicable to any development there. So as Lily mentioned earlier, this is a little bit unique, and it's, we haven't identified it as a cleanup zoning, but effectively, that's what we're doing here. We're getting rid of the old placeholder, RA Zone, and establishing a zone that's consistent with the underlying mixed-use business campus designation. So that's primarily creating the opportunity for the developer to come in and apply for a site plan review, as if that thing was already in place. So this is an initial step, and it's an important one, the heavy lifting on development conditions, we would anticipate coming, coming from the site plan review.
Okay. Okay, um, thank you. I really want to make sure that it's clear that there may be an expectation, at least by one council member, that that be developed into a trail. I understand that there may be some confusion on the issue related to whether it will be on the east or the west side of the Enterprise Canal, where there would be trail connectivity. But the way that it appears to be being utilized is that there is a connection via the Enterprise Canal for those who wish to, for example, go to Riley's Brew Pub. They would take that Enterprise Canal portion on the west side in order to make that connection. So, if the transition is better on the west side as it crosses Nees versus the east side, then let's go in that direction. I do think, though, that, I'm not so sure how the people or the residences, or the residents that lives to the west side would feel about having people on their trail, while it would make more sense, I think, for those who are going to be working in a medical center to be able to just get out, go on to the east side of the Enterprise Canal. And then, as Bong has mentioned, this will eventually connect to the Clovis Community Hospital as a result of the bridge that we're planning over 168. The meetings have already been cut out there on Nees. They've already been cut out on Temperance Avenue. And I think regardless of what we may direct people to do, they're going to be using that Enterprise Canal. I think our challenge is, how do we make it as safe as possible to cross Nees, and then again, as safe as possible to cross Temperance?
Sorry, Dwight, just to interject really quickly. Was able to just confirm on ArcMap that the trail system actually comes along here and is on the east side of Temperance Avenue.
Well, I'm wanting it to go along the east side.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that that's where it's planned in the general, it's indicated in the general plan, but yes, I do understand.
All right.
And on this comment, Lily is correct. We wanted to connect the Enterprise along Temperance and Nees avenues. We wanted to get them to a safe signalized crossing. And although there's probably a desire to be able to want to cross mid-block, we don't want people doing that. As development occurs toward that intersection, that trail will get improved. I think your point's very well taken. It would be good to have some signage to help people understand how to make that link. But we really don't want them crossing Temperance or Nees Avenue mid-block and following the canal there.
We have, we do have some crossings across streets that are not unlike Nees and Temperance. You know, Nees Avenue itself, though, as you get closer to Willow, it's an undergrounding that is taking place. And then, and I think that might be problematic when you're right next to a canal.
It is.
The, and then, you know, when we get across, when people cross on Peach, or people cross on Alluvial, or even on Fowler, and some of our trail systems, they have, you know, the flashing signal that people push in order to cross. I'm hoping that people are trying to get used to that. Obviously, the trails are being used significantly. Whether we want people to go to a safer crossing at Temperance and Nees, I think is, I like the idea, but I'm just saying from a practical perspective, what I've seen is that they're not doing that. In fact, we see that right now because of the complaints we're getting from folks who wish to use that Enterprise Canal pass, trail, air quotes, in that county territory between Sunny Side and Fowler. So, I just want to make sure that there's some funds set aside by whoever's going to be developing it, so that if we choose to build that trail out, that it's not something that's going to come at the expense of the city of Clovis, but for the development in that area. And if now was the time that we needed to communicate that, I'd want to have that debate now. And if now is not the time to communicate that, then that's fine. During site plan review, it sounds like this is, at least from my perspective, something that's going to have to come to the council's attention as opposed to just being handled ministerially. Thank you. And so, the answer to my ultimate question is, site plan review. When are we going to debate this? Is that right? Are we saying, "Oh, we've already decided it, so it doesn't matter"?
Just to be clear, the site plan review by protocol would be handled administratively after the rezoning is approved. So, any commissions which are standard or required by ordinance or through the general plan would be attached, including any trail development requirements or fair share payments, impact fees, and so forth. So, if there are specific issues that you believe are appropriate to attach that are related to the rezoning itself, that would be the time to have that discussion. The actual, you know, development and the application of the conditions to the development would happen at the site plan review stage, but this is really opportunity as a council to weigh in and attach requirements if they don't already exist in the code.
And so, it sounds like this would be the right time to do that. We don't need to talk about it now. I mean, I actually think if we are communicating, at least this is something that I'm going to want to add as a condition of approval, then perhaps maybe we can debate it after the public has had an opportunity to comment on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn, did you have anything you wanted to throw in?
No, thank you.
I'm in agreement with taking the opportunity, whenever we build out next to a trail, that we should make every opportunity to improve it so that we can kind of improve the connectivity of our trail system. Lily, looking at this map, the area between Portal Sierra 1 and 2, that larger blank area, is that the, didn't that come before us about a year and a half ago? And its medical offices, another medical office development?
Yes, so I think Mayor is recalling this area here, Portal Sierra 2.
Right.
Yes, it came in with a rezone amendment to modify the site layout, their master site layout. That is this area right here.
And isn't there, I do recall there being a trail of some type, or at least a walkway along there, along the west side. Would, assuming that would, would that connect up to Nees at some point?
Yes, so that trail system actually would come up through here from Alluvial all the way to here, and then it'll traverse over this way. And it's intended to kind of just connect over here, or if they'd like, connect this way to...
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we're going to get a little bit even more connectivity. And first, that kind of brings that issue with mid-block crossing even probably bigger. So, that's all I have. Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll open this to the public. Does any member of the public wish to address the council on this item? Any member of the public in the chambers? Seeing none, Mr. Kirk, do we have any public comments on this item?
We do not.
Do we have any WebEx?
There are none.
Okay, seeing none, I will close public comments and come back to the council for discussion and action.
May I?
You.
So, I think that the mayor just pointed out another reason why, perhaps maybe we need to figure out a way to cross at least Temperance. And then, if we're going to be figuring out a way to cross Temperance, how it is we get pedestrians across Nees Avenue. I think that it's probably worth noting that we don't have a representative from the property owner or the applicant here. I'm presuming that's because of the COVID issue, or is there something else going on?
We do, we have Alondra Williams available for any questions on WebEx.
Okay, thank you. So, Alondra, I'm just going to open it up to you initially. You've heard some of the comments, hopefully, about the requirement that I'm considering putting in as a condition for the development, that funds be set aside or that the eastern portion of the Enterprise Canal be developed as a trail. Did you, would you like to comment on that?
I think that we're okay with...
Alondra, you are unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I think that we're okay with making sure that we can make it safe for pedestrians to cross wherever they need to cross, and also to help the city maintain the safety of the trail.
Thank you. So, I think that, I understand from a liability perspective that there are some challenges that the city faces when we have these trails in our community. And the liabilities extend not just to crossings, but also to sections of the trail that run along waterways. I think that it has become clear from trail usage that they are a, an amenity that people really enjoy and makes our community a bit unique. As we work to encourage connectivity and pedestrian friendliness and bicycle friendliness, I think that having off-road, the pedestrian travel and bicycle travel is generally a good thing. The fact that it can go along an Enterprise Canal, I think is generally a good thing. I do think that the cost associated with the crossings is going to be there, but it's not going to be extraordinary in the sense that it would be, you know, requiring us to go underneath Nees or underneath Temperance, but continue to have those systems that we already have in place when our trails cross busy streets, which is the use of those, that signalization. I think for us to, in the future, say, "Well, we're not going to have, you know, crossing of these intersections because the risk is too great," is probably not recognizing how valuable these trails are and also how people have continued to use these crossings, at least in the city of Clovis, without any significant liability issues. There was a collision on Fowler, which is by Temperance, and the reason for us going towards the pushing of the button now instead of just the automatic. And I think that that, you know, that is something that this council has adopted as an approach to these crossings and should continue to adopt here at Temperance and Nees Avenue. So, I am requesting that we add as a condition the development of that trail section east of the Enterprise Canal as a condition of approval. And I'd like to know my colleagues' thoughts, if they have any on it, or otherwise, I'd just go ahead and make that as a motion, if we're ready for a motion.
Bong? I like it, because this is what I, the only thing I had in question. How about, I think we need to address more the connection. So, you're talking about the east side of the canal, east of Temperance. What about the trail that's already at the northern part of that green grass section, that potentially will be the future trail? They're going to be heading east and west, south of the canal on the western side. And so, I think we need to think that one through as well. And I agree with the eastern side of Temperance, that it goes on the east side of the canal. I'm okay with that. But I think on the southern part, it still makes it confusing, because they'll come up, they can come up from Alluvial, go up along that trail, which would be beautiful and nice, go between the two neighborhoods and the RT Park, head right, and then when they hit Temperance, what do they do? Because they're going to see that trail across that, you know, bond that you suggested. Now, they're going to want to cross right there, or do they, or do they go up because they're going to cross, you know, that part of it?
Yeah, so just to be clear, because I want to make sure that I'm not confused on it. The, there are two things that need to be happening here. If our objective is to eventually connect the Enterprise Trail to the Clovis Community Hospital, and I think that we have indicated that that's our intent, then we would want to, at Temperance, make sure that we have the trail on the western side of the Enterprise Canal. In addition to it going over and into Clovis Community Hospital, keep in mind, we're also going to have some developments taking place. In fact, developments are already there. People are walking or riding their bike to Riley's Brew Pub, or the Me and Ed's over there. That is, I think, you all know where that is there on 168 and Temperance. So, that transition, we need to, and frankly, on Google Maps, it already shows the Enterprise Canal on the western side, excuse me, it shows the Enterprise Trail already on the western side of the Enterprise Canal. So, when we cross Temperance, at some point, we need to get pedestrian and bicycle traffic from the eastern side of the canal over to the western side of the canal. And I think that's easy to do, because as we have talked about, how we're going to have already a trail within the RT Park up, you know, north of Portal Sierra 1 and 2, that that's going to be the logical crossing spot there, and I think people will catch that. I don't know if that, that made sense to you. I just thought, Bong, you were saying that we were going to go on the western side of the canal between Nees and Temperance. And I wanted to make sure that, at least my intent was, to be on the eastern side of the canal between Nees and Temperance, and then transfer, because I think it's already taking place, the trail to the western side of the canal, once it crosses Temperance. Are you tracking me?
I'm fine either way, as long as, yeah. I don't have a preference, as long as, I think, as people leave RT Park from Phase 1 and 2 there, it's clear. And then, how that also connects to north of Nees. So, that, those are sort of...
Okay.
You know, those connections, where they're crossing Temperance and where they're crossing Nees. So, if it's all at the light for the northern part, then at least that's taken care of. At least everybody knows that they need to go up to the intersection of Temperance and Nees to get to the northern part of the trail.
Okay, and then, I think for our purposes today, I would just be, when appropriate, I'd be making this a condition that they build out that trail on that side.
Jose?
I'm a little confused now. So, on the west side of this property in question, you want some trail improvements, yes?
Yes.
Okay, so now I get it. But, Bong, on the east side of this property in question, you also want to ensure that there's some logical transition to, across Temperance.
So, because of the, I worry because of the trail from the north, that's all.
Right.
So, where, when it gets to Nees, or Bob, are you also suggesting a crossing there along the canal?
What I understood that to say was, for the Enterprise Trail, when it dumps onto Nees, our citizens are to go to Temperance and cross at the intersection, is that correct?
Correct.
And then, and then go south, and then go back on the trail, on the west side of the trail, further south towards the hospital, right? But now, I hear Councilmember Whalen wanting to keep the option to continue south on the actual canal, on the trail, west of the property.
All that you've said is correct.
Okay, so now, I get you.
Okay.
Lynn?
I was just going to suggest that the language be directional. It's a rezone, it's not a site plan. Just direct the, you know, connectivity, safe crossing, et cetera, and then staff can work that out, but that was my only suggestion, from afar.
Thank you. Bob, did you make that motion? I can't remember.
Yeah, no, I never did. I wanted to make sure that it was, I heard from everybody before I made the motion. So, at this point, I'll be moving that we introduce the ordinance and approve the Rezone R 2019-009. Also, that a condition be placed for this approval, and that, whatever number it would need to be, that would fit in sequence with this ordinance and this resolution, excuse me, this... and this resolution, excuse me, this rezone, that, uh, there would be trail improvements, um, required as a condition of approval on the, um, western side of the property, which would be the eastern side of the canal along that property line. That's my motion.
I'll say.
I have a motion in a second. Uh, Mr. Clerk, if you'll read the roll, please.
On a motion by Councilmember Wayland, seconded by Councilmember Flores, uh, for item number 17, Councilmember Ashbeck.
I will vote for it, but I'll just say if the staff goes and comes back and says it's the reverse, that it's on the eastern side or whatever, I mean, then we're going to back to start zero. So I just, we may have just backed ourselves into an unsolvable corner, but I'll vote for it in the meantime.
Lynn and I.
It is.
Councilmember Flores.
Aye.
Councilmember Moana Tua.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
Mayor Besseger.
Aye.
It's approved, 5-0.
Item number 18. As soon as I get my page terms here. Item number 18 is consider review and approval of a resolution 2020 dash 21, City of Clovis Annual Budget, Five-Year Capital Improvement Program and Information Regarding the Clovis Successor Agency. Jay Schengel is our presenter. Jay, or apparently Luke.
Actually, I'll be doing it in the effort to keep bodies down, you know, as, as few bodies here as possible. So we are introducing the budget tonight. Um, I apologize, first of all, we don't have the printed copies available yet. Uh, generally, our timeline is such that, uh, at the beginning of March, we do our five-year forecast and then we start working on the, uh, the budget. And by this meeting, we would have printed budgets, uh, uh, for distribution. Um, two weeks after we did our five-year forecast, we went into COVID mode and, uh, have been scrambling, trying to figure out what the impacts, budgetary impacts of that are going to be. So, uh, we do not have the printed copies yet. We will have those by the June 1st meeting, by our next council meeting. So the, um, the budget before you tonight, this is just being introduced, uh, and there's copies of it in the, that were in the agenda packet, uh, electronic copies. Uh, it's a total of $282 million. Uh, 59 million of that is capital improvements, so leaving 223 million for operations of that. About a third of it is a general fund, uh, a little more than a third is enterprise funds and the remainder is, uh, internal services and special revenue funds. The, um, go ahead. So the enterprise funds are fairly consistent with past years. Those are all fully funded, balanced, uh, and structurally balanced. The general fund is not a status quo budget. Uh, as I stated earlier, two weeks after our fin, five-year financial forecast was when the COVID pandemic broke and the emergency was declared. Um, we've been scrambling to try to put together our best estimate. As I've discussed with council in the past, uh, between the final quarter of the current fiscal year and next fiscal year, uh, our best estimate at this point is $10 million in lost revenue, uh, to the general fund. Um, and that is, uh, mostly, almost all in the discretionary. So, uh, the general fund, that $10 million probably represents about 15% of the general fund and even a higher percentage of the discretionary revenue. So the general fund is structurally imbalanced. We, we cut as much as we could, um, without going as far as laying off current employees. Um, we thought that would be an overreaction at this point at least. Um, so, but even with as many cuts as possible, uh, it's structurally imbalanced for the, uh, for the following fiscal year, for next fiscal year. It is the expenditures exceed revenues. Um, we're going to make up as much of that as possible through use of our fund balance this year. And, and just in simple terms, I guess the way to think of this is, uh, think of the fund balance as to what the balance is in the checking account at the end of the fiscal year. Uh, the emergency reserve is the savings account. So, uh, as soon as this, this, um, uh, crisis hit, we started reducing expenditures, froze positions, um, to save as much money in our current year as possible. Um, right now, we're projecting that we're going to be able to finish out the current year with $2 million fund balance. And, uh, that will help carry us into next year. We will spend that, um, plus we'll have cost savings next year, but we are still projecting we're going to need to spend another $2 million in, uh, emergency reserves next year. Um, the reductions, uh, we froze all of our services, materials and supplies accounts, um, cut back wherever we could. We have 19, uh, currently vacant positions that we've frozen. Um, most of those are in public safety. And I think we have nine sworn police officer positions, a couple of firefighter positions and other positions that are not going to be filled, um, uh, in order to reduce our costs. Uh, and, and in reality, there's just, because it's discretionary funding, again, 87% of that goes to public safety, um, and most of those budgets are made up in personnel costs. The only way to save significant dollars is to, is to cut those, uh, those personnel costs and leave those positions unfunded. Um, and on top of that, you know, the PERS costs continue to rise. They were rising already due to the, the last valuation of PERS. Uh, we will know after July 1, what's going to happen, what the COVID impact on the PERS costs will be. Uh, as, as you may be aware, PERS forecasts a 7% discount rate, meaning they assume they're going to earn 7% on their portfolio. Uh, and then every year they reevaluate. And if they earn less than that, then two years later, it kicks in as a higher PERS rate. So depending on what happens with PERS's portfolio, uh, two years from now, we could see another jump in the PERS costs.
If I had to ask a question now, I heard that the state is going to not make their payments to PERS. It, was that accurate? But I, I thought I heard the governor say-
I, I had not heard that. I, I, I had not heard that.
Because I would imagine if that's the case, that would cause real problems.
Well, and, and I don't, yeah, I, I don't know that they, I, I don't know after Pepper, if they can have a pension holiday any longer. Um, for the state, compared to the state's general fund budget, um, the PERS costs are a much smaller percentage of the budget because, uh, the, the state's entire budget, a much smaller percentage is personnel. Um, it's a lot of programs and distributions of money. Um, so in a, as a percentage basis, personnel costs and therefore PERS are much smaller for the state than they are for local. We will be making our full payment as usual, plus, you know, for unfunded liability. Um, and it won't go up immediately because of the COVID impact. It will go, if it does go up, it would go up in, in two years. So what we'll have to wait and see is at the end of this fiscal year, how did PERS do? And, uh, we have a, it's just a straight calculation. And we have the spreadsheet and we'll be able to report on that after we see how PERS closes out their books for the years. But it will be, if, if, if their total portfolio in earnings are less than 7%, there will be an increase two years from now.
Thanks.
So the, the budget does include, as I said, 59 million in capital improvements and some of the projects that are moving forward. Now, we are continuing with the design and construction of Fire Station 6. Um, while that is a general fund cost, it is primarily funded out of development impact fees, or there'll be debt service that's funded out of, for that project that's funded out of development impact fees. Um, so it doesn't really affect our cash on hand or discretionary spending that much, although that's something that we're planning for, opening up at the beginning of, uh, calendar year 2022. And at that point, we'll need to bring on entire staffing for another, you know, another station. So, um, that, that's a projected impact, but that's not in the current fiscal year for that, that increased cost. Uh, we are continuing with the design and going to bid on Landmark Commons, um, which will include the transit hub, which is a special funded general fund project. It comes out of other monies that are non-discretionary, but it also includes the senior center and all of that's discretionary spending. So we'll be having a discussion on that when, when we have the, the design done and bid. We're continuing with the design of Loma Vista, uh, Village Green. Um, again, that's funded out of the Parks Fund. And then we have significant street improvement, maintenance and repair projects funded through gasoline taxes. They're general fund, but they're non-discretionary general fund. It's gas taxes. And then we have $2 million in SB1 included in that. So going forward, um,
Question on Landmark Commons. Any word with regards to the library funding from the county at all? Any threat to that? Or is that pretty secure and that will?
I, I have heard, I have heard nothing on that. So I'm assuming nothing has changed. But, uh, their budget year is a little different than ours. So, um, uh, we'll just have to see what they, but as far as I'm, as far as I know, they're continuing with at least the design and, and bidding of their project as well. So tonight's the introduction of the budget. Uh, and June 1st, uh, in a couple of weeks, we will be having the budget hearing. And we're shooting for an adoption at that time. Um, the one thing that we all need to be aware of is that, um, this, this budget, if, I would like to say that we're so good, we can predict exactly what's going to happen economically and fiscally in the next year. But I think that would be overstating anybody's abilities. So our plan is to introduce this budget now, but we will continue monitoring. Every quarter, as we see the, what's happening with the revenue, as we see what's, uh, sectors of the economy are open and closed, how people are reacting, um, what's happening to our revenue stream, what happens at the federal level, the, um, you know, the, uh, the House has passed a, a measure that would direct money directly to, uh, local governments to make up for some of these budget falls. Don't know if it'll get through the Senate or the administration, but we'll be monitoring all that and it's going to change. Um, and then we will adjust the budget as necessary. Every quarter, every time we have new data, we would come back and, um, internally, we can make some, uh, you know, changes, holding additional positions vacant as people retire. Or if, if it's better than proposed, then we could start filling some positions too. So we'll be watching that and monitoring it. Um, but either way, we were already under a fairly constrained discretionary spending environment, um, before we lost $10 million in discretionary revenue. So going forward, we expect that to continue. Um, it's just a level of how badly it's going to be constrained and are further reductions going to be necessary. So hopefully not, but we'll have to see.
Mayor, can I ask a question of Luke, please?
Sure.
Uh, Luke, um, have you seen any projections, um, if the federal, uh, dollars come through? Any particular allocation by counties or cities that you have seen or, or not yet?
Um, I, I have seen a few and, and they've kind of bounced all over. Um, uh, I actually haven't dug deeply in what was passed by the House because I'm sure it's going to change in the Senate. But the last time I saw, in, in rough figures, Clovis would be getting, uh, in the order of $6 million, um, out of, uh, out of that, that bill, which goes along, you know, between, if we got $6 million, it would, you know, mean we wouldn't necessarily have to tap into the emergency reserve. But I'm not going to get, I'm not going to start planning on that until it gets through all through three levels of government.
Thank you.
And that's my presentation. And I'm open for any questions.
Any questions for staff? Bob?
Thank you. Um, Luke, you know what? I, I've, um, been on the council for, um, a few years and, and I always struggle with the idea of the internal service funds and how we come up with a figure for that. Cause I always think it's one department charging another department and somehow that, I'm presuming that that ends up equalling out in the long run. No more money's coming from taxpayers. No more money is coming from, you know, those who use enterprise funds. It's just like a way of keeping track of who owes who inside of the city. Is that a fair characterization?
Correct. And it's, and it's confusing. And again, I'm not a, when I came into this job, um, I'm not a, I don't have a finance background, but it, it's all done under the general government accounting standards. Um, but what it is, is, uh, we'll take, uh, for instance, the, uh, fleet fund. Um, the fleet shop takes care of the police vehicles. So, um, rather than the police department paying an outside mechanic to take care of those vehicles, they're paying an internal department to take care of that. So that, that money is added to the police department budget, but then it's transferred to, they pay the fleet department. Now, in the big picture, what this shows is, um, so 59 million of that, that internal services, that money's counted twice. We get the revenue in and, and we give a million dollars, just on simple terms, a million dollars to police department for their vehicles. So that's a million revenue and a million in expenses.
A million in the general fund revenue?
Yes.
Okay, comes in.
And, and then that's a million in expenses to the police department. But then through the accounting standards, it's also a million in expenses in the internal services. So if you add it up, it looks like, okay, we just spent that million dollars twice. But it's, it's an accounting thing, but it is a transfer for services that are internal. And it's, uh, the fleet is, is one example. Um, the personnel, uh, you know, when the, when the, any department is doing recruiting, um, they're recruiting for, it could be a utility worker, it could be a police officer, it could be a fireman. Um, but the personnel department, which is part of general services, does all the recruiting. So those costs, that department pays into personnel. So, um, it's IT personnel, uh, finance, um, you know, much of the work that the Department of Finance does is billing for the utility department, putting together the bills, collecting the money, make sure it goes in the right accounts. So the enterprise funds pay the finance accounting for that work. So it's an internal cost. It's not, it doesn't result in additional cost, um, to the, the public. It's just an internal accounting issue.
So when I look at the 282.4 million dollar budget, I think in terms of, okay, well, that's how much money is coming from outside sources, whether it be bond, um, indebtedness that, uh, we've taken on or, um, our property taxes, our sales tax revenues, you know, any other funds that may be coming in from outside of the city of Clovis. But that wouldn't be correct because there's, what is the figure, 53 million?
59.
59 million for internal services. Uh, so is it fair to say like of that 282.4 million, 59 of that really isn't coming from an outside source? It's just kind of moving money inside the?
Correct.
Okay.
We're counting that same dollar twice when it gets, when it comes into the initial department and then when it goes to the other. And that, it is kind of one of those non-intuitive issues, but it is all done in accordance with general accounting standards.
Okay. And then, um, related to the capital improvement projects, are we yet starting to see, uh, bids coming in lower for capital improvements? I know the COVID's only been with us a couple of months, but?
Not, not yet. Um, now, we haven't, we haven't put out a, a lot of projects, but, um, we haven't seen a big change yet. Uh, it'll take a little bit of time for, because there's such a backlog. And then also, so much of the work we're doing is streets work and with SB1 and with the gas tax, even though gasoline sales are down, so there's a somewhat of a reduction in that, that industry hasn't been hit as hard as some service industry. So it'll take a while before we start to see those reductions.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Any other questions for staff? Lynn?
Luke, I was just going to ask to follow up on Councilmember Moana Tua's question on the library. How much of that funding do you recall was from Measure B? I just feel like they might've had the money set aside for these library constructions. Do you, do you, have you ever heard a figure on how much of that money was coming from the tax sale or the Measure B tax?
So originally, I know they had, I want to say 8 million that was, uh, dedicated to the library in Clovis. I know they went back and got a reallocation based on more current costs. I honestly do not know how much of that was Measure B, how much of that was from any other county fund they had. But they did have significant cash on hand for the library and, uh, were, the last I heard, it wasn't something that they were counting on additional revenues for, or that it was revenues that could be spent otherwise.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Thank you so much.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I will insist to the public, any member of the public in the council chambers wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, do we have any written comments?
We do not.
Do we have any WebEx comments?
No.
Okay. We'll close public comment and come back to the council for discussion and action.
Mayor, you want a motion to, uh, consider, to review and approve this budget just to open the item, Luke? Is that correct? And then we'll close it on June 1st?
Correct.
I'll make that motion.
So I just want to be clear because we're not approving the budget with this motion. We are, because I know we're not approving- We are, because I know we're not approving it until June.
We are introducing it at this point and then it will remain open for comment and consideration until the June 1 meeting.
Okay, so the motion is just to introduce the 2021 City of Clovis annual budget and?
The language on the agenda says review and approval, the 2021 manual budget, so I was just repeating the printed agenda item, but yes, that is the intention of the action.
I get it, yes, thank you. And with that clarification that it's just a motion to introduce the budget, I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second. Clerk, will you call roll, please?
For item number 18, to approve the introduction of the budget on a, on a motion by Councilmember Ashbeck, seconded by Councilmember Whelan. Councilmember Ashbeck?
Aye.
Just to be clear, just to?
To approve the introduction and bring back to, on June 1st.
Thank you.
Sorry, Councilmember Ashbeck?
Aye.
Councilmember Flores?
Aye.
Councilmember Moana Tua?
Aye.
Councilmember Whelan?
Aye.
Mayor Besseger?
Aye.
It's approved, 5-0.
Item 19 is a receiving file, 2019 Fire Department Annual Report and Council Presentation. Chief Benaski.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This evening is an item that normally comes to us in approximately March, but because of COVID, it got pushed back and we didn't want to have too many people where it's been too long in the senior center. So then it got pushed back again to the first meeting in May, ran long, so I'm going to try to be short this evening, give you the highlights, but please take what's in here with a little bit of a grain of salt because it might look really Debbie Downer right now, especially due to the current budget where we are, and know that this is a report that was drafted before COVID and the unfortunate news that City Manager Luke Serpa just gave on the future budget. But we have to do this as part of our accreditation process. This is our annual report and is part of our three major guiding documents for the fire service and we have to give that to the jurisdiction having authority, which is you as the city council. So we did some good things in 2019. We had the insurance service organization out. They came and re-reviewed our department and we received a Class II certification and we moved up from an 82 to an 87, 90 as a Class 1. And really what this rating really affects is commercial real estate and really what it helps the most on is multifamily owners is, is the, once you get into the Class II, you start to save significantly on their insurance. So that was a good process and like I said, we moved up to the high 80s. We took delivery of our new ladder truck that council gave us the authority to purchase. Unfortunately, COVID, we had a recall and they haven't been able to get the item fixed yet, but it was in the process of being exchanged. It was actually on the actual ladder, so they had to send out a whole new piece and put it on and do that. So we should have that back at the end of the month. We entered into a great partnership with Clovis Unified, their Career Technical Education Division, and they, we entered with them to build the three-story clean training prop out of C-trains. They contributed about $65,000. And if you remember, approximately five years ago, we entered into a rental lease agreement with PG&E to pay us to do continuing education training for PG&E at the north portion of the training center and they put about a half million dollars worth of their own equipment in there. We used some of those funds then to put about $20,000 of our own funds in to build out a clean prop at the training center. So we have one we burned live fire in and obviously that has cancer contaminating items in it. This one will be an all clean prop with, based off of and runs off of propane, there's propane tank out there. We're just finishing up with some painting and that worked out as a really good cooperating effort with the school district. And then the last one was is we now have to report after the GoShip fire in the Bay Area, our state mandated inspections. We were 65% last year, we moved that all the way to 98% and we did that with the fire prevention inspector position vacant, which we will then also as part of the budget process, maintain that to be vacant for next fiscal year also. I saw this sign at a restaurant, but I really thought it kind of applied to the fire service where it kind of says, good service, cheap won't be fast, good service, fast won't be cheap, and fast service, cheap won't be good. So kind of, to me, really kind of summed up the fire service in a lot of different ways of how it worked and Councilmember Whelan, I know you like those photos, so I thought of you, so that's why I put it in there. Now unfortunately, some of the bad news. So where we start? So when I became the chief four years ago, all of those were in green and we were meeting those time standards, those benchmarks that have been established. And we had a lot of conversations about how we got to 6:30 from the five minutes of excellence because that now includes the, well, not even the whole dispatch portion, but dispatch on, once it gets to our dispatch center. And you could tell where we moved out from 6:30 to 7:12, we're 7:13. The things that we really have control with the great work of the firefighters is, bless you, is the turnout time of 1:30, we're at a minute 28. ERF is where we get 16 people together for the fire attack, where you have enough people to put the fire out. We're at 10:27, our goal's 10:30, so we're just barely above meeting our goal there and the rest of them, as you can see, we're definitely exceeding our goal. And most of that isn't anything that I have control over is we've maximized the most of call processing, the dispatcher asking the questions, geocoding the address and sending it to us with alerts now even on our phones. And then the turnout time that we control is still within limit. It's really just the travel time that is no longer started to become manageable. And as you see on this map by the grids up there, you see a lot more purple this year than we've ever had before. The purple's always kind of been up there in the north end of Harland and that's just because of the road network without Owens Mountain going through, which was always the design. We have to go up to Shepherd, make the right turn, go down, get on the freeway and go up. And the other reason why you see it out there is, is there's no cooperating partners. So when we're on a call and there's another call, there isn't another engine to go up there. We either have to send 44s, which is down there south of Shaw, or we have to send 43s out there off of Minewall all the way to go out there. So it's a long truck to get out there for what we call those simultaneous calls or those stack calls. And that's kind of what you see with the spot there south of the station, when they're at training or things along those lines that they, we have to mandatory do. It leaves big gaps on the east side compared to what you see on the west side. We've got good cooperating partner with Fresno City Fire on the west side, so Engine 6 and Engine 10 come in and really help us out there. So that's why you see the west better than the east because there is no county fire stations or anything out there.
When's Owens Mountain Parkway supposed to come in? Anybody know?
Long time. We're only going over the Enterprise Canal and it'll end there.
So that's not going to help?
No.
When's it going to go through? So it'll help you guys? Is that not?
Overtime. I mean, it will, I mean, it's when development comes, there's houses in the way, there's certain pieces there that, to make that work, so.
Okay.
But that's ultimately how it got put there was the long term of Owens Mountain going through. And someday it will, but that is part of our issue that we have up there. And as we move to the north, you can see already we're in the purple at the edge of where town is today. So as we move north of Shepherd, we're not going to be able to meet that for a long time to come.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, on Station 5, everywhere else where the boxes next to the station are very good colors, but Station 5, I think the 835s must be the hospital and right next to the stuff. Why are those taking longer when it's so close?
It's stack calls and the call volume's not that much. So in order to get a grid in here, you have to have 15 calls. So the area doesn't have 15 calls if it's not undeveloped. So you can kind of see down there at the bottom here, the right, you can see a little bit of the homes there, but the grid's white, this grid's still white. It just seems there's not enough calls there. What's happened here is, is the call volume's still not that high, but when it is, we're on another call, so another engine has to come, Station 4 has to come up there to reach it, and that's what's causing that district. The same thing happened two years ago and I learned from that one to make sure that I go back before I come here to find out exactly why. One's purple around the fire station, so we actually went and ran that data and that's exactly why. There, two of the calls, they were out training, so they weren't there, they were actually down in the south part of town at the training center. And then the other ones, they were on another call. So it's just the stack call effect for us up there. Like I said, it, normally what happens is Fresno, where somebody also come across to help us when we're not in quarters. This one, there's nobody out here. It's Quail Lakes with a two-person company way out there that we don't have an agreement with. So it's a long way to get back out there. So our fire prevention, we did 569 plan reviews. We have 3,515 occupants, life safety occupancies in the community. We do majority of those on a biannual, so every other year, so at least about 1,750. We still manage with the great work of the crews, they get 55% of those done without the fire prevention inspector position being filled. And again, we did 98% of the state mandated inspections and we did 569 residential and commercial plan reviews. So a very good year for us in fire prevention, good work in getting all those things accomplished. So let's talk a little bit about challenges moving forward. So this is where we kind of go on the little downer side. So the southeast currently, so what we call the southeast, which would be Station 6 area, so that is Temperance East, Bullard South. There's currently as of January of 19, there's 700 homes approximately in that area. We've had 725 calls for service in there and, and our response times in that area at the 90th percentile are cresting almost at the, where we are, we're at 10 minutes. So where we are moving forward with Station 6, when we do open Station 6 in the beginning of '22, hopefully, it will require the addition of nine personnel and really it's equates to about 10.5 with backfill for overtime, it's up to maintenance and staffing. So it's got a cost just in labor around 1.2 to 1.4 million, then lights, utilities, diesel fuels, all the other pieces that go into it. Station 6 all-in estimate is somewhere close to, and this includes the fire engine, the PPE, the hiring, initial cost for the radios and everything, is approximately $11 million. The current DIF fund only has 1.9 million in it. We will come in next fiscal year in '21 in July to purchase a new fire engine for that station. There's 865,000, so roughly by the time we get this year's, we'll be back down to about a 1.8, 1.9 million reserve in the DIF. We've done a great job with finances staff, looking back at DIFs all the way back to 1998. So if you look back from 1998 to July 1 of 2020, we collected approximately $10.2 million in DIFs. If you look at the 20-year, so from the past 20 years, we collected nine point, roughly about $9.3 million. In that period of time, we really should have paid for two fire stations, Station 5 and 6. So if you look at it, we have not in DIFs collected enough funds to pay for the station. And primarily the reason for that is when you look back in it, we're collecting costs in early 2000s that are based on the cost of what it is at that point. Well, unfortunately, we buy it at the end when it's the most expensive at the very end of it. So our cost is at the very end, but we're collecting on a fee at, at that point was like less than $600. Today, the fee, if you break it down, is closer to $1,400 per unit. So that's the difference over that almost 20-year period for the DIFs of where we are. We have talked about the TCP fund, that is, the intent is to borrow from there and then pay that back through each DIF over the years to pay back that fund, so then they will have those funds available for the TCP mitigation when it becomes necessary. But there is the southeast, at the top there is Bullard, Temperance is on the left, you can see where we went from 17, about 3,300 homes to 7,400 homes, call for services at 7:31 and we're at 10 minutes and 17 seconds. There's more homes out here now than when we opened Station 5 on the north, there at Temperance, just to give you an idea of what we're serving and where we are, that there's more in the southeast. And we assume full build out and what we base the fee on is approximately 10,000 homes. So we're about 74% build out. Now for some other good news on the challenges for the future. So again, like I said, we have to hire nine firefighters. If you take the nine, it's about 1.3 million with some overtime to maintain the staffing, it's about 1.4 million totally there. So the, run the fire station, we look at a $2 million annual plus the capital set asides for the engine replacement, station maintenance, those types of things above the $2 million. If you look at departments throughout the state of California that run three fire stations, their budget's about 8 to 10 million. If you look at places that are running six stations, they're approximately 19 to 21 million. If you take the dollars that we put to what we'd need to open Station 6, we'd be approximately 19 million. So we'd be on the very low side of it and we'd still be well below the $145 per capita cost, which is one of our benchmarks. And that's based on the Central Valley and I'll show you a table here in a minute that shows between fire departments and cities protecting 60,000 to 250,000. So where's the fire department and where have we been? So since 1999, we opened Station 4, we've only hired three additional personnel. So in, in 2003, when we opened Station 5, we had a two-person squad plus a fire engine at Station 2. We took the two-person squad, added a third person to it and staffed a full engine company at Station 5. And we've been at that mindset or that level of staffing since Station 5 opened in 2003. So we've been 57, 58, 59. We're at 58 right now. We had a vacancy all year, we gave that money back to what the city manager was talking about fund balance and we're budgeting 58 for next year. So we're basically budgeting four positions below our 61 allocated positions. So you can look at 58, we're pretty much back there since the last recession, but in turn, you know, the population's gone from 95 to 117 to 119,000. And here's a pretty telling graph and it pretty much tells you from Bakersfield to Modesto where everybody is, what their estimated population is, what their fire department budget is, what their per capita cost is, their number of sworn, their firefighter per thousand. And then Councilmember Moana Tua mentioned something about, you know, looking at other revenue, so I thought it was appropriate when we were getting all the data just to basically find out who's got it, what's the percentage and that's there on the right. So if you look at it comparable, the comparable average winds out to be 128,000 population, approximately $17 million, at about $151 per capita. In our benchmark, we use 140, 145. The average is 78 sworn, but it comes out to be about .6 firefighters per thousand and nine out of the 12 have a sales tax override. What you're getting for the value of the city of Clovis, we're $126 per capita, we have 58 or .5 sworn and there's no tax override. Even we add the nine personnel for Station 6, we'll still only be at .56 firefighters per thousand and that's based off of the 117 number, so as the population grows, it'll actually decrease from the .56. So it just shows you the value we've been getting and some things that we've done. So we've done a lot, there isn't a lot more to that ingenuity or things we can do to put things in place. We've done medical priority dispatching, we've done auto weight agreements, we've done all sorts of things to reduce our call volume optcomes to get us there quicker. Honestly, I go to conferences, I'm fortunate to speak at conferences, I don't have any new innovation to squeeze any more out of the system than what's there today. And that's, you know, I wish I had something better to say, that there was something else I could do, but I honestly don't have any more tricks up my sleeve. I'm kind of out of the, I'm out of the trick business. If we were running the same operation we were running in 2008, we'd be approximately 19,000 calls for service out of five companies. It would just be completely unmanageable and that would be a lot more purple because we'd be stuck on one call where we couldn't respond to the other calls. So what we've really tried to do is make sure we're available for the calls when they come in. Here's our next one. So challenges for the future comes our fleet. We're very fortunate, council gave us authority, we replaced the, I mean, City Manager Serpa's been very good to us on the fleet side. We replaced the ladder truck, but it's replacing a ladder truck that's 22 years old. We have on order, we haven't been able to get back to Pierce because of COVID and the flight issues, so we definitely, it'll be late spring for the delivery of those two fire engines. We will have to order a new fire engine for Station 6, but realistically, we'll have six stations, we'll have reserve and specialty apparatus, that's 14 apparatuses. If we want to keep them on a 20-year average, we have to buy one more than every two years and we haven't unfortunately kept pace with that. So right now, even when we get the two new engines, we'll go to 13.57 average for the fleet and then we'll move to 15.57. We're using the 20-year fleet average because we, that's kind of what we had, but I'll be honest, I don't think the new equipment will make it 20 years. It's kind of like what we're seeing in fire engines are kind of like the dishwashers or a washing machine. If you have one of the older ones, it would last forever or a long time. The newer ones definitely do not last as long as the older ones. And it's primarily, a lot of it's all the electronic pieces, just like your car in there and they've tried to make them a lot more complicated than my personal opinion they need to be, but that's part of the issues that we're going to see. So you can see where we are with the fleet. So up here, we will be replacing this engine, which was a 1996, and then we replace the 98, but we will have to keep the 2,000 because we'll need it for reserve for Engine 6 when it come, for Station 6 when it comes online. for Engine 6 when it come, for Station 6 when it comes online. So the 2000, still be 20 years old, but it will still be necessary. So we have a reserve engine for Engine 6. And then over time, as we replace this 03, then we'll get, the 2000 will leave. But as you can see, we get the slight dip, the 13.5 set with the two new engines, and we go right back up. So, you know, we haven't been on the 10-year for a long time average. Last but not least, we get into our station capital. We've done a really good job. Station 1 and 5, they were placed, really great stations. Station 4 is being well-maintained with facilities. We put a lot of stuff in there. Station 3, we just remodeled the kitchen, did some stuff. And it's in the process of being repainted on the exterior, started tomorrow. So we're definitely maintaining our things a lot, lot better to try to get the most lifespan out of it. But Station 2 out there is 40 years old, actually 41. It's got a lot of ADA issues. It's got one big bathroom. We basically made individual bedrooms. We'll kind of show you some photos. So bear with me a little bit of the photos. I'm not, I definitely would have gotten an F in photography class. So bear with me on that one. So again, Station 2, it was built in 1979. It's 41 years old. It's definitely going to need to be, odds are demolished and rebuilt. The location is excellent. So we are at an excellent location. We did acquire approximately 12, 14 years ago, the property expanded in the back. So we could put some portables there for when we have to do the rebuilding. But if you look at rebuilding, probably comes with a cost of 8 to 9 million dollars. It would be a general fund expenditure, and there are no funds set aside for the station remodel. But where you can see it is, is every time we kind of peel back the onion, it keeps getting worse. We've had issues. We've had a sister joist, a lot of the joists in the attic. All the ends are in the process of being cut off. Even this portion here to the left is actually newer, but the whole piece fell off. This is a little hard to see right here. You can start to see all the cracks. And you can see this little line right here. Well, that should actually be flush, but it's not. But it holds all the HVAC, the swamp cooler, all the guts of the station basically for heating, cooling, and everything are above it. So if we try to fix it, then we have to figure out how to reroute it and do all the heating, cooling, water heaters up there. So there's a lot of different issues, lots of the pieces of the stucco have cracks on it now that are piece, that are falling off. So it's got a lot of exterior issues that translate into the interior. So every time we kind of look at it, peel it a piece apart, we all know that, where do you stop? It just comes to the fact that there's no place then to stop it. It does have the original kitchen. This is about the size of it. It's about two people overload it. It's got the original cabinets. We've just painted them and put stainless steel dishwasher in it. Here is the left, when you go into one door, here's the two urinals and the two sinks. And then over here in the back is the, in the same area are the two showers. There's no lock, only on the main door. So in turn, other people can't use the restroom. We do have both genders in the workforce. And this is also along the wall here would be the lockers in the picture. So one bathroom, really not conducive to, you know, privacy or anything else along those lines. We did add a washer for clothes, but the dryer's on the other side of the at bay because there was no dryer, dryer, vent, or anything out there for you. So it's just, really hasn't kept pace of where we are, what we need to. So that pretty much ends kind of where we are for the needs. Our performance unfortunately is not meeting our benchmarks in a lot of different areas. And unfortunately, as time tells, we do still have a lot of capital needs that we still have not been able to address since the last downturn. I kind of like city manager's new term. As soon as we kind of hit one, it kind of becomes the new norm. And I think we've been functioning for the last 12 years under the new norm. And I'm a little concerned of what's the new norm after COVID going to, you know, put in place for us. But, you know, we've done well. The barding unit, CFA members have done excellent. And we've done and provided the best possible service we possibly can out there. But we do have some service gaps. And I just want to make sure you're aware of that. Part of accreditation, we have to make sure that the authority, having jurisdiction, is aware of them. This is a receive and file, and I am available for questions.
Thanks, Chief. Any questions for the chief? Bob?
Chief, always an excellent report. Is the report one where you cannot include community benefit? Because, you know, it has the community risk reduction, has all the things that you do, the nuts and bolts. But our department does so much more. For example, like we go to Porterville, we help out there. We, the firemen do the pink boot. They raise over $40,000 for the Burn Foundation. You know, these things that, that shows the above and beyond, is that something that they don't ask for? So that way it can be in this report? Or is this just more work? Because I think, I think we don't tell a story enough. And, you know, it's a public document. It's out there.
I see where you're going. So this is, it's just the two different mindsets. So the accreditation says there's basically three pages of it that we have to report. The rest of it, we have editorial review, or we could put whatever we want in it. When Chief of Spain and stuff was here, it was like 20 some odd, maybe 25 pages. I kind of went to, let's try to reduce it to get the most bang for the buck, make sure everybody sees it. We went to a lot more color graphics. I don't know what's the right answer. So we can add things like that. There's nothing stopping us from doing that. We were actually trying to get it down to more like seven pages and more of, we made all the tables like for the fire stations, the engines, so it was quick and easy with letter grades and colors. I don't know if it's right or wrong. It's just, we have a certain portion that we have to report to the accreditation agency every July. That portion is covered in the first like two and a half pages. After that, we have really the editorial control to put whatever we want. But you are absolutely right. We do much, much more than what's in here. This is just the basic meat of the operation for life safety is really what this is only reporting is, is where do we stand in life safety. So the equipment portion, the stations, the southeast, that's our local flavor that we think is important to put on there. But the fire prevention, the benchmark response standards, and those have to be put in there.
Yeah. I, I mean, if it's not more work, I think those stories are, are great. You know, we helped Cal Fire, whatever, like the barbecue, those are, I think we, it shows the other part of the report where we actually recognize what the men and women do that is so great about our department. And so, just, just a thought. I don't want to create more work also, but at the same time, yeah, those are good highlights.
Absolutely. We can definitely work our way towards that, no problem.
And then with, with regards to sort of the needs that you, is it difficult, or is it, I don't know if it's illegal, for us to go and request donations and/or builders to help with renovations? Where, you know, I know that line can be kind of fine, but at the same time, they're experts and they, when you say, hey, you know, we need a new restroom, can you guys put in, you know, a couple urinals and a toilet? Where they also have tax incentive to help, and it's within their expertise to help. So have we ever tried that? Is there, David, is there a limitation? I know that they may be reluctant because I'm paying already into this fee. Why can't you do it? But I think the reputation of our fire department and our police is one that does, does not trigger a, we give you enough money, can't you do more with it? Kind of.
Well, just the one thing is, is when we have to go down the path for plan check and those pieces. So another reason why we haven't opened this Pandora's box is the bathroom's not ADA. So somewhere along the line, we kind of opened up the, one triggers the next, and then the next, and then the next, at Station 2 at least. Now, other things, I'll let the city manager or David speak to that. But just know on this one.
So before Dave weighs in on the realities, it, it does, it can turn into a difficult situation when we're getting a donation from somebody on the fire department, and then building departments reviewing their plans and a plan check because they're working on another project in town. So we have to be careful with that, you know, on, on how we, how we deal with that type of thing. Because at the same time, we are regulating those businesses into the building department. And they also do other business for us. And then you get into a slippery slope with, you know, we have policies that, you know, forbidding, we can't go out and get something free from somebody. It's, it's a gift to the city and then award them a contract. So you have to be very careful for that. I mean, on small stuff, it might be doable, but it, it becomes a slippery slope on, on the magnitude that we're talking here. And really, like the chief says, Station 2 is a, a fire sheet's going to have a 50-year life generally. And you're either going to have to completely remodel it if you had like a brick building and, you know, a historic brick building or something. But for a wood frame building like that, 50 years is a tear-down and rebuild type of situation. And that's multi-million of dollars.
Thank you. Bob?
One of the, I'm a big proponent of increasing our revenue in the general funds through improving our, our business climate in the city of Clovis. And I think we generally have a pretty good business climate here. And I'd certainly not want to create any disincentive for people to locate to the city of Clovis, but instead would rather, would rather have an incentive to locate their businesses here. And in light of that, what I noticed, and I thought it was pretty spectacular, is that I thought you said that our ISO number went from 82 to 87 over a one-year or two-year period?
Five. We got re-reviewed five.
Okay.
And here's the issue with that. So there's a little bit back behind it. It's, is the, they gave five bonus points for prevention activities. They didn't know how that would go across the US. So the score's out of 100, but you had an opportunity to earn 105 points.
Okay.
So we're playing a little cautious. You might read out there in magazines or stuff, departments that are all now saying, oh, I'm Class 1. I have a little bit of nervous if I was one of those chiefs, because the last thing I'd want to be is the fire sheet that was a 1 that got it by like 89.9 or 90.
Right.
And then they take away the five bonus points, which there's discussion that that'll be melded in once they have a better idea how that affects across the country. And the five points come out. So really, our 82 to 87, part of that is the factor, the five bonus points.
I see. Okay. So not, it wasn't like we took any action in order to get those additional five points. It was really just the five bonus points, if I'm hearing you correctly?
Correct.
Okay. So to get the ISO rating of 1 would be a significant, I, I think it would be a significant factor in encouraging businesses to locate or relocate here. Because then, if I understand correctly, if they have, if we have that rating in the city of Clovis, that their fire insurance rates would go down. Is that an incorrect analysis of what you, the benefit of going to ISO 1?
The person who lives in town pays local taxes and is a fiscal conservative, I would tell you that the cost is not out, I mean, completely outweighs the benefit.
Okay. It's a point of diminishing returns at some point.
It really, really is. So 1 and 2, yes, you would save a little bit. But you've got to remember that 1 or 2, when to go from a 1 to 2 is, is the amount of residents and people that it actually, you know, or not residents, but commercial occupancies it affects are very few and far between. And when you start to get to the benefit of that. Now, if you're a 4, there's a huge benefit to go to a 2. Even from a 3 to a 2, 2 to 1, so really a 1 and a 2 are kind of classified pretty close to each other. 3 and 4 classified pretty close to each other, 5 or 6. So when we made the jump in 2015, from a 3 to a 2, that was the big jump that we did. That's what we put a lot of effort into. That got us the lower rate. We've now maintained it. We're solidly there if they take the five points away. So we know we can maintain the 2, at least moving forward. And that's probably the best benefit. Because Walmart's not using an ISO. They're self-insured. It really helps the larger independent strip mall owners, people that are downtown, that own businesses down there, the buildings themselves that they own. Those are the benefits. But I don't necessarily know what we'd have to put in place to be Class 1 would way, outweigh the smaller benefit to them for a Class 2. I think what we benefit, businesses occupying it into the city is that we have our own hazardous material teams. So depending if they're trying to come in as some sort of industrial, they know we have a hazardous materials team respond out there. We have our U.S.A.R. We have some other things that they look at through their risk management portion, especially large retails and people like that, that they know we provide that locally.
What is the number that would cause us to get a drop in our rating to 3? Is it, we get into the 70s or if we get into the 60s?
70. So from 70 to 79.9 is a 3. And then, so basically a C.
Okay.
So right now, we're a B. And so look at it that way.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you.
Lynn, do you have anything?
No. Thank you, Chief, for the report. I, I do think relative to this item and the next, I think we've talked about this. I've brought it up probably the last three or four or five years. But I do think we're going to have to have a really difficult community conversation. Because while I agree with you, Bob, that the way to generate revenue is business climate, I think in the COVID-19 world, that's not possible. So I just think we're about out of runway on ways that, to the chief's point, we can't be much more innovative, efficient, creative, and still maintain the standards that we want. And I don't, I think a community conversation about that at some point with a small group of our residents would be, would be important. So we can think about what Clovis is going to look like in the next decade. Because it took us 10 years to recover from the last recession. Probably going to take us 10 years to recover from this one. You know, as already has been mentioned, Luke's point about, kind of go back to the lowest common denominator not where you were. So I just, I think we're about out of runway. And I don't know what that means or looks like. But I think it's worth a conversation with some residents to see what people are thinking about that.
Thank you, Lynn. Any other questions for staff? I will open this to the public. Any member of the public wish this council on this item? Anyone inside chambers? I see none. Mr. Cork, do we have any public comments via the email?
We do not.
Do we have anybody on WebEx?
No.
Okay. I will close public comments, and this is receive and file. We will go on to item 20.
Wait, one last thing. If you want a nice one, everybody got electronic copy. We're trying to, you know, save paper. But we do have the nice glossy color one. If you'd like one, please let me know.
Thank you, Chief. Good presentation.
Thank you.
Item 20 is a workshop for the Clovis City Council to conduct a workshop to discuss the impact on ongoing city operations during the COVID-19 state of emergency as declared by the federal government, state of California, county of Fresno, and city of Clovis, and to explore actions that the city may take in response to the crisis. Item A is consider a letter of support from the Fresno County Board of Supervisors, letter dated May 12, 2020, to Governor Newsom regarding authorizing Fresno County the discretion to reopen certain portions of the local economy. Luke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So item A, the letter of support. So last week, the county, two weeks ago, the governor came out with some criteria that would allow counties to accelerate stage 2 opening. He started in phase 1 of stage 2, which is like retail, just at curbside, no rest, no dining restaurants still. But the state came out with criteria that would allow counties, if they met certain criteria, to move faster through the stage 2 opening. Fresno County applied the first week it was available. They didn't meet the criteria. A week ago, they sent a letter to the governor requesting a change in the criteria and some, some consideration for different measures. Item A was for us to send a letter in support of the county's letter. It's somewhat been rendered moot because today, the governor made new announcements and the criteria has changed. So it's not necessary for us to send this letter. What I would like to get is approval from the council to send a letter to support whatever the county does this week. Because what's happening is the governor relaxed his criteria for counties to move ahead. And on his press conference today, he said that just their base estimate, it looked like 53 at least of the counties in California would be able to meet this new criteria. Hopefully Fresno's one of those. On a conference call this afternoon, Dave Palmaville did say that they will be submitting another application. They're, I'm sure they're all still down there working on the application based on this new criteria. So the county's moving ahead as fast as they can. Hopefully, they are going to get the self attestation, I think, and be able to start moving faster through the current stage of opening, which could lead, if they get that, it would allow the county to do such things as to open up restaurants on, for dining in with the state's criteria, the guidance that they've set out. So the letter that we asked for is, is not really necessary. But what I would like is council authority to support whatever Fresno County is pursuing if they need something from us this week to get that. In, in other items, just as some information, last week, we had talked about wanting to get the data for how many Clovis residents had various levels. And, and again, the, the confirmed cases is not a good metric to use. Because as we ramp up testing, we're going to ramp up the number of cases. So I asked, but I did ask the county for that. I asked them to, if they could tell us how many people have been tested, how many... So I asked, but I, I did ask the county for that. I asked them to, uh, if they could tell us how many people have been tested, how many have been, um, uh, tested positive. And so I have that information. It's not really that critical. I can tell you that, uh, as of, and this was as of last Thursday, uh, since this started, fifty-six Clovis residents have tested positive. Now, when I say Clovis residents, that's a Clovis address. So they could live in the unincorporated area outside of Clovis, but as long as they have a Clovis address, they're still counted in as Clovis. The county does not break it down by specific jurisdictional boundaries. Uh, there have been nine hospitalized that have a Clovis address. They said they had numbers on ICU, how many of those nine were in ICU, but they did not have a lot of confidence in those numbers at some system that the medical. So they didn't even give me that number, but there's been zero deaths, um, in Clovis. So, uh, I had a very good discussion with the county health last week on sharing of this data and working together and, and sharing a message that, um, you know, it's, it's, it's not about the rules. It's about safety. It's about social distancing. It's about common sense. It's about, um, uh, just reducing the risk. Um, so they are gonna continue to make data available to us. We're gonna set up, um, uh, they are in the process of, at least last week, they're planning on assigning public health staff to each city to kind of be kind of their liaison and working with them and, and, and get data back and forth, um, and work on messaging. I'm sure that that's probably postponed a little bit just because they're having to scramble to submit this stuff to the state to get their, their attestation. So, um, that's where we're at now. Uh, and again, I would only, rather than approving the letter in support of the county's last letter, I would just ask for approval of support of whatever the county does this week and we would, we would provide that for the county. That's all the information I have and I'm open for questions.
Any, uh, questions or comments for Luke?
In your conversation with them about, uh, including more data for the city of Clovis, um, were they also going to, um, be including more data for the other cities in the county for, for public consumption so that we can see those numbers as well?
Yes, they, well, they, they wanted to, um, they, they want to have just a better liaison with all the jurisdictions. I don't know how public it's gonna be and that's one of the things we need to start talking about. And, and their, their concerns are understandable. They don't, um, they don't want to necessarily paint too dark of a picture for any one community. If that community happens to have a single facility or a single family that had a, a, an unusual number. But they also don't want to portray no problem here if in fact it's just that it, you know, no problem here yet or, um, whatever reason. So, um, we do need to have further conversation on how that data is gonna be shared, um, and publicized. But, uh, they were in agreement that, you know, we need, we need to kind of settle on some common metrics that we're using. And, uh, again, the hospitalization, ideally ICU admittance would be, uh, another one. But they, for whatever reasons, that data is not as, um, I guess, they don't have as much confidence in that data as they do just in the hospitalization. So that gives at least a lit, a test, a, an indicator. Again, none of us are in a bubble. So, uh, you know, there are communities here in Fresno County that have very high numbers that I know of that it's because they have a lot of workers from a plant in Tulare County that happened to live in a Fresno County community. And there was an outbreak at that facility in Tulare County, which, so you have to be careful. It, it's not a hard science, but it is a good indicator. And they are gonna share them with all of us. And hopefully we can come to an agreement on how we're gonna use these comparatives.
Yeah. I appreciate you asking the question, of course. And I don't need to show my, um, map. I had a map prepared like I had last time. But I think in light of the, um, the fact that you're able to get some hospitalization numbers and some, uh, death numbers, that is helpful. I want to continue down this path. And the, the reason that I want to continue down this path is because we need to be open to the idea that, um, removing our orders and having, uh, the State of California and the County of Fresno be the primary enforcement mechanism could possibly have been a, a, the wrong choice, right? And, uh, and so, um, if it is the wrong choice, then we want to know that as soon as we reasonably can and take the corrective action. So if we can narrow down that data, um, I think that's really gonna be, um, helpful as we move forward. I don't, and I think that we're all on board with the idea that we're not gonna stick to this path, um, you know, despite all data, right? And so, um, if it turns out that, uh, things are kind of going in the wrong direction for the city of Clovis, then I will certainly make some, um, some corrections. And, you know, I, while I won't show the map, I will certainly say that it's, it's, it is recognizable how few positive cases there are in the city of Clovis compared to the five largest communities in the cit, uh, in the county of Fresno. And figuring out why that is, um, is either gonna be helpful to the other communities or, uh, but at the same time, I don't, I want to be sympathetic. I wanna, wanna figure out what can be done in order to help those other communities, if anything. What is it that we, we are doing right? Because even two weeks after we've removed our orders, our numbers are still significantly better than the numbers at the time that, um, proportionally, um, at the time that, uh, I shared them with you last week. So, uh, thank you, Luke, for, um, exploring that. And I look forward to hearing more from the county Department of Public Health on getting us more data.
The, uh, you know, the issue with Clovis numbers, maybe including people in the county, uh, from your numbers last week, Bob, where you looked at Sanger and Reedley, and they're in the same boat because they get, it's like with Kingsburg, you have Fresno County, Tulare County and Kings County with Kingsburg addresses. With Reedley, they have large tracts of Tulare County. So I, it's really difficult to get these numbers sometimes to, to be a true indicator of what's going on. I mean, I'm certainly in support of giving, uh, the city manager the leeway to, uh, as quickly as possible, be supportive of, of the county in any actions that they can bring to, to get this, get us, getting our economy moving forward. Just as a matter of business, last, we had discussed last week during council comments about, uh, ABC taking action against licensees and basically lumping them in with, uh, business at bars that do nefarious things, uh, for, you know, if the, if any of, any of the licensees decided that they were going to disobey the governor's orders. Uh, I sent a letter. Everybody got a copy of it. Um, as an individual council member, uh, I have, I sent an email to them today asking them if they've taken any action and I have not heard back from them. I did have a conversation with Assemblyman Patterson, uh, actually two or three conversations. And we talked about specifically this order, this proposed order that was coming out and, and about the potential that if the governor, um, wasn't gonna be, was gonna be taking action against bars, could a bar inactivate their license voluntarily so they can open as a restaurant? So those are all being discussed. Hopefully, based on what I heard in the last couple of days, that might be moot. But I sent the letter because the, the, uh, public discussion period was five days and would not have permitted us as a, as a city to address it in that period of time. So I sent a letter as an individual. Um, anybody else have any comments? Bob, yeah. I'm in support of the letter, Luke, the, uh, the authority to write the letter this week. So, um, I wanted to see if, um, for our, I guess we won't have a meeting until June. If the city or you, the staff can present the effect on businesses. So for example, how many businesses have closed? So that way we kind of get a sense of, okay, we, we weigh both sides. If we know that already, then you can let us know. But actually how many businesses that, that have closed because of the state's orders? And then can you give an update or status on the city? Is the staff all back? Are we, all departments open? What's the timeframe? What's the plan for the city?
So as of today, we have opened our doors. Um, we are using social distancing. We have plexiglass screens between our, you know, screening our employees from the public, but we are open. It, it, we're still recommending as many people as possible do as much as possible online, but we are open. As far as employees, um, uh, we are continuing to follow currently the, the state guidelines. Even though we're an essential function, um, the state guidelines for office work is, you know, continue working remotely as much as possible. What we have done is where we can do that, um, and maintain reasonable productivity. We are continuing to work people remotely, um, but where, uh, but other than that, we're at full staff. If they can't effectively work remotely, we are back at work. Uh, we have, obviously our rec center is still closed. Our senior center is still closed, so those people are still off. Although we are using the senior center staff to help with, uh, today was the first day of our meal delivery program. And I think they delivered a hundred and fifty or a hundred and fifty-two meals today. And that number's probably gonna go up because when they were, they were delivering them to facilities like mobile home parks where there's a high concentration of seniors. And, um, we're actually partnering with churches and other community service organizations. We bring the meals to the facility and then the individuals from that organization deliver them to each home. Some of the other residents there said, oh, wow, I, I saw that application and I thought it was some sort of a scam, so I didn't fill it out. Maybe I'll go ahead and fill it out. So, uh, we expect the number to go up as we see, as, as they see it actually taking effect. And, and so we'll see where that grows. Um, as far as business closure, uh, Andy is in the room. Um, he, he has his, uh, the best pulse of that and we, we can give a report. Although, um, I don't know, I don't know if we can get down to the level of detail if you're looking for businesses that have, you know, it, it, that have closed temporarily or permanently or reduced staffing. I don't know how much information he has. I'll turn it over to Andy at this.
Yeah. At this point, it's really too early to tell where a business is gonna land at the end of this. Different associations of different types of businesses have come up with some projections. For instance, the California Restaurant Association is thinking that thirty percent of restaurants will not make it back from the, the closure. But I have not seen that play out in our community yet where I'm for sure that restaurant is closed and is not planning to come back or retailer or another business for that matter. But we are closely watching where businesses are at and reaching out to them very often with resources and aid and asking them to call us if they need help.
And do we also have information on those that actually received some sort of funding, some sort of help? Because when we, when a lot of businesses came, they said they, they didn't get any help. And so, you know, it'd be good to hear how many did receive some type of assistance from, uh, either the state with the, uh?
Yeah. Neither the federal government or the state has provided any data on who got, uh, like a, a list by community, uh, that I'm aware of. We're continuing to look to find out more, but just this last weekend, the County of Fresno issued another grant program using their COVID funds. We got that out to our business community on Friday night and we were helping businesses today apply for those funds. We might have more information on that program since it's more locally controlled.
And then it'll probably be later also with regards to number of jobs lost?
Uh, we have projections, um, that were done through the University of Pacific out of Stockton. Job numbers for us, we won't see, we'll see unemployment rates, which are for our residents, but on a monthly basis. Probably in early June, we'll see numbers for April. And then as far as the actual businesses in Clovis, we probably have that data until July.
Thank you, Andy.
Lynn?
Um, just to thank you, just a couple of comments. Um, I, I think I'm interested, Bob, in your, the data questions. I think your number last week was, I don't remember, forty-something, forty-three cases. I think the number today is fifty-eight in Clovis. I think it would be interesting to have a discussion among the council about what is the metric where it's, where we might need to revisit the approach we've taken. So I don't, I don't know exactly what the number is. So I just, I, you offered that last week that I thought it was an interesting idea. So, um, today was fifty-eight, last week was forty-three. So I don't know if that's right or good or too much or not enough or any of those things. But I do think we need metrics on the other end. Um, so I would just say that. I think my concern with the letter from the county is they actually can't meet the metrics. And so I worry, I just worry about that. So I, I, I don't know quite how to, how to support a letter that says they, they're close to meeting them, but they're not. And so I'm, I'm a little torn on that. Um, I would encourage the county to try to get the cities to agree with each other because part of the confusion is you have to wear a mask in Fresno, but not in Clovis. And you can do this on Tuesdays in Kerman, but you can't do it in Sanger. So if a county could provide any kind of leadership across this, at least the county, I think it would be really helpful. It's very hard for people to navigate. Now, I've gotten a number of emails, as you all have on the other side, that people that have come to our Clovis businesses and are, say they'll never come back because there's no masks and there's no hand sanitizer. And so people have different expectations of community. So I think we need a community standard that people can count on in our businesses that you come here, this is sort of what you can expect. And people can choose whether they want to come or not. I get all that. But I just, I think we could do more as a county, probably as a region, but surely as a county to be more consistent. Cause it is not, it's not easy. Um, and I don't know that number of cases is actually the right metric. But you offered that last week, Bob. So I'm just, I'd love to have a conversation at some point with this group, maybe in June, if, if there's a workshop on June. What are the metrics that we made a mistake? I don't know what it looks like and I don't know how you'd ever begin to roll it back. But I think it's a, we're thinking about now rather than later. On Friday, I was just gonna, I was gonna add on Friday, the three counties in California with the highest rate increases in COVID nineteen, Fresno, Kings, were two of them, and Imperial County was the third. So the valley is still percolating along, doing whatever it's doing, less than other parts of the, of the state for sure. But we're not out of the woods as a region. So I just, I want to be really careful and, um, clear on what people can expect from Clovis businesses, Clovis City Hall, Clovis City Council meetings. I can see none of you have on masks. So I just, I think we gotta be careful of our model. Um, so, and I know I'm the outlier on this, but I have to say my outlier, outlier piece and, um, I just did. So thanks for that. Luke, have, uh, has the governor, uh, issued any changes on the, uh, public meeting, uh, opening back up public meetings?
Uh, no, there has been no change on, on that.
Okay. Will you let me know when there is?
Certainly. I didn't, I didn't understand your question, Lynn. Can you ask that one more time?
At the start of the emergency, the governor provided for public meetings to be closed and the majority here voted to open it. And so that precluded my attendance. So when the governor lifts that order, then I will return. But I just didn't, I don't know when that will be or I don't know. I haven't heard much about that.
I understand. Thank you.
So the governor's order, the governor never ordered, uh, meetings such as this closed. He provided the ability to close them, but they were not ordered as being closed.
Correct. And when he removes that ability to leave them like this, that's what I'm looking for.
Okay.
And Lynn, I'd like to thank you for being our medical conscience on this. It's, it's important that we have at least one person telling us where, where we need to be when it comes to that portion of it. Jose, did you have something?
Well, I, I'm on the other side. You know, there, there's, there's, in a natural bell curve, there's two outliers. One on one side and one on the other side. I'm the other side. And so I say, I say to the council, let's, let's stay the course. If you see what the numbers are today, uh, we need to see how bad this bug is. And we have seventeen deaths in a county of nearly a million people. That's point zero two per capita. It's for, uh, that's, that's one point eight percent of, of the people of, 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 uh, Fresno County. That, that, it's, it's, it is a very dangerous virus, but not to all. And so we, we need to know how to manage it. We have to do the right things. We have to trust science. We have, where we can, we, we need to know, we've learned a lot. I said that, I said this very, uh, almost more than a month ago. We know what happened in China. We know what happened in Europe. We've known what's happened in the East Coast. We need to keep paying attention to what's happening there. They've gone through their, uh, their curve, they're further along in their curve. They've gone through their, their curve, they're further along in their curve than we are. We're a little behind here in Fresno County, Tulare County is even worse, but, but we're coursing this epidemic. Up to this point, we have played hide and seek with this virus. You know, they've always told us, we're, we're going to flatten the curve, and they've also to, and why did we flatten the curve? We flattened the curve so our medical infrastructure would not be overwhelmed. And they've always told us that area under the curve is still, how many people will get sick? So, all we've done is prolong the, the duration of this epidemic. So, all those people will still get sick. We're hoping that there's a, there's some kind of treatment. We're hoping there's, there's some kind of vaccine, something that will intercede before that, that area is, is, comes to fruition. But this virus will still impact everybody. The minute we come out of our hiding places, this bug is still there. So, let's be smart about it. We have to keep our enhanced hygiene, we have to keep our social distances. If we're sick, put a mask on. We got, we've learned a lot to, let's keep doing the smart thing, but we, we gotta respect the bug, not be in total fear, crawled up in fetal positions and fear to come out and be humans. There's also a toll for those of us who are trapped inside our homes, and there'll be a reckoning too for that. So, so I'm on the opposite side. We gotta know how to manage this disease.
Thank you, Jose, and I'd like to say thank you for being the other side of the conscience. Bob, did you have anything?
Bob?
Yeah, so Lynn, if, when, when John puts something up on the screen, are you able to see it on your computer?
I don't know. I mean, I can see the council agenda right now. I don't know, I don't know. Try it.
Okay, so you can see that it says council items?
I can.
Okay, can, go ahead and put up my map then, if you don't mind. All right, so, your question was, you know, from at least, and I can only speak for myself, and I, and I always have to give the caveat, particularly after our discussion last week, that the positive cases is not really the important numbers we're looking at. It's the hospitalization and it's the deaths that we're looking at. But that, those numbers are not yet public. So, when it comes to my analysis of where the city of Clovis fits, I want to do my best to make sure that we're looking at the same or similar types of communities, and so, for my purposes, these are all Fresno County communities. They're all, they're the five largest in population in the county of Fresno. And what's going to really get my attention is if at some point, the city of Clovis comes into equilibrium with these other four communities that are listed there. So, I did run the numbers, and again, I'm focused on equilibrium. I wish I had hospitalization rates for these other communities. I wish I had deaths for these other communities, but I don't have that. So, again, with the caveat that these are just the positive cases, and it could be that they're doing more testing in these other communities. So, so track me here if you can. If Fresno had the same rate of infection as Clovis, Fresno would only have 275 positive cases, they have 585. So, there's a different number there proportionately that shows that Clovis, at least when it comes to positive cases, is doing relatively well with the, in comparison to the city of Fresno. Now, just to kind of take the flip of that, if Clovis had the same infection rate as Fresno, we would have 128 cases. Instead, we have 60. Moving on to Sanger, if Sanger had the same rate of infection as Clovis, they would have 14 cases. They have 104. If Clovis, and then flipping that, if Clovis had the same infection rate as Sanger, we would have 456 cases. Again, we have 60. With Reedley, if Reedley had the same rate of infection as Clovis, they would have 13 cases. They have 77. If Clovis had the same infection rate as Reedley, we would have 354 positive cases. Again, we only have 60. And then, finally, with Selma, if Selma had the same rate of infection as Clovis, they would have 12 cases. They have 122. If Clovis had the same infection rate as Selma, we would have 595 cases, and remember, we have 60. So, if at some point, we start to get into equilibrium with these other large communities in the county of Fresno, I'm willing to say, hey, we need to do something more in the city of Clovis. So, right now, they're, you know, clearly, in the measurement of positive cases, there is no equilibrium. I'm hoping that at some point in the future, we can identify through hospitalization rates and death rates where that equilibrium might be. So, to answer your question, what is the data that I'm looking at, and when is it that I'm willing to say that we have maybe made an error in our decision two weeks ago? The data I'm looking at is only the data that we have available for comparison purposes. And when we reach equilibrium with these other communities, that's when I'm going to say, okay, well, clearly, we need to make some, take some corrective action. So, I don't know if that answers your question, and I, and I know that you're an outlier. I appreciate that you're an outlier, and, but I, I wanted to at least let you know where my head was on these points.
Uh, thanks, Bob. I think, I'm not a data analyst at all. I think the, I think Drew, you commented, you know, places like Selma that have large packing facilities where there's many more workers close to each other. It's not a number for number, straight across the board continually. I would just encourage, maybe you'll never get Jose and I, but I would encourage some conversation about what is the standard for the city of Clovis. Joe, your comment about what can we learn? We learned that you don't just wear a mask when you're sick, because I could be positive right now and never know it. So, I just think if we could find, what's so hard about this is, we can't even, not we, you, not the five of us, but it's really hard to get people to agree on facts. But I would just continue to encourage staff and the council to speak in affirmative, clear, this is what we expect, and then model what we expect. I've gotten a fair amount of feedback about farmers market, that the vendors have on masks and people don't, or people take their pictures and post them on Facebook and there's no mask. So, I just think we have to be careful on what we're modeling. I don't know the right answer. I think we know that masks don't protect those that are sick. That's not the point of the mask. So, I agree with you, we should go with what we, what we know to be true, and in this climate, it's such a small list of things we know to be true. It's scary, people die, it's everywhere. That's about all we can agree on. So, I just, I'll, I'll just, I've resigned myself to the outlier position, and I'll try to just stay focused on what I believe to be hospitals and kids and people, but I, I will never make traction here in this group, but I just want to thank you for allowing me to express my point of view.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your comments, Lynn. I'm going to move into a different direction. Chief Fleming, there have been reports that, and I, and I have a feeling that these are not correct reports, but that the city of Clovis in some way worked against a business in the city of Clovis related to an ABC operation. It's my understanding that it wasn't this Clovis Police Department enforcing the stay-at-home order of the governor, but actually supporting the ABC, who was witnessing a violation of the law that is different than the order. Do you have anything that you can add to that? Am I clear enough?
That's perfectly clear.
Okay.
We're just assisting ABC.
So, as an assist of ABC, and the, the people or the, the license holder of the, of the alcohol and beverage control, they were engaging in behavior that was inconsistent with a person who is, who owns a license, and as a result of that, ABC was going to take some action against that owner, and they needed perhaps some backup if things went wrong, and that's where the Clovis PD stepped in.
Yeah, since it was in our city, they just asked for us to assist them. We stood by. There was a violation, but the owner was educated, asked for, to comply, which he did, and hopefully, we'll have to come back at this point.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. I, I can say that at the, you know, there, it is difficult for some people to understand, particularly in an environment like the farmers market, that, you know, just because you can, well, in, in our case, we bought a margarita to go at Bobby Salazar's, our family did. And I could see the temptation to just drink that margarita while you're, you know, waiting for the rest of your food to become available, but you can't drink your margarita out there on the bench in front of Bobby Salazar's. Unfortunately for Bobby Salazar's, what they did is that they, you know, they put the margarita in a bag, and then they stapled the bag, and they're really clear with signage that you cannot be consuming this out on the street of Clovis. And so, I'm hoping that as a result of what took place, it's going to be more clear that you can't be, just because we're not enforcing the stay-at-home order, doesn't mean that you can't, that you can be drinking alcohol during farmers market out on the streets. That's just not the right thing to do.
Yeah, and when the weather's beautiful and it's, it's tempting. That's why we, we wanted to educate the owners, hopefully, when they're doing those off-sale purchases, they can educate the public that they can't go out in the farmers market and start drinking, that they have to take those home. But we did have quite a few public walking around drinking, so our focus was not on them. It was to educate the owners, so hopefully, prevent that in the future.
Okay, all right, thank you, chief.
And chief, if I'm, if I understand it correctly, there was an administrative warning issued, no fines were issued by ABC?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all I have. Lynn, do you have anything?
How did you know that? Does it make a sound or something? How do you know that I wanted to talk?
We could hear you.
He, because he's the mayor and he knows everything, Lynn.
Oh, don't, don't do that to me, please. Um, I just, I just had a really random thought that Andy, and I know other communities have done this, speaking of outdoor, whatever, eating. In other cities, there's been some effort to try to put more patio or tables on sidewalks. And I know, over the years, we've talked about that in Clovis, and so, I just, and I remember an idea some years ago, and this is a ridiculous idea right now, but turning in that, that back parking lot behind Trilio's and Bobby Salazar's, that little back patio into dining areas for those various restaurants, maybe not possible, but maybe. So, I don't know if we've looked at any outside eating opportunities for our downtown restaurants that could help with their social distancing, because some of those restaurants are going to have a hard time if only half the tables are available. So, has there been any activity in that regard, Andy, or whoever's still there?
I'm at the micro, this is Luke, I'm at the microphone. Andy can come up if you have a specific question, but yeah, Andy and I were actually talking about that last weekend, today, what we could do, and it's, you kind of got a, a different situation with different restaurants. Restaurants that are in, you know, that the private, the parking lot is private, they have a little bit more flexibility, or if there happens to be a plaza adjacent or an open area next to them, they have more flexibility. Many of the old town restaurants, the challenge will be that any expansion of outdoor, and if we're still going to maintain ADA clearance, probably means a loss of parking. So, that, that's something we are looking at and starting to have those discussions, but it's not a one-size-fits-all.
Yeah, I think, I think four or five years ago, I think if Dwight still has a napkin or two left in his, in his pack, but I mean, I think there was some interesting ideas, those small parklets. I mean, it might be, this is the time you try something dramatic, and that is turning that entire parking lot. They either can have patrons or they can have parking, and they may not get them both right next to each other, but it seems like they would rather have revenue than, you know, I don't know. It's just, I think it's, maybe it's an idea worth revisiting. Thank you.
I want to compliment you, Lynn, for that idea. That's a great idea.
Try not to sound so surprised. It doesn't feel quite as good when you sound that surprised, but thank you.
I, I should speak into the microphone. What would be the ABC rules related to kind of sidewalk dining or parking lot dining? Can they have their drinks out there?
Yeah, you, you'd need to fence it off or something. I'll turn it over to Andy, he's got most of the information on that.
Essentially, it'd be like a beer garden type situation, like you have at an event, unless ABC changes their policy on those types of things. This is happening in other communities across the state, so we may see some best practices come out.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? I, just as an update, I've, I've been talking about the comparison between my home county in New Jersey and Fresno County, and specifically comparing Clovis to a town called Lakewood. About three weeks ago, they had, I think, 1,600 cases and 88 deaths. They're at 2,151 cases and 128 deaths. So, we're, we're very fortunate, we don't have the, you know, the density that they do back there, but, you know, we, when people say this is all a big government hoax, that is absolutely not the case. So, we, we just need to make sure that, and, and I, I think Bob's point is completely accurate, we need to make sure we, we're keeping an eye on this and be able to change direction in the event that things go south on us. Any other comments on the workshop? I will open this up for the public. If any member of the public wishes to address council on this item. Do we have anybody on WebEx?
None.
Okay, and we have nobody in chambers?
Correct.
Any, any comments from, on the, the email?
No.
Okay, I will close public comments, and this is, have you gotten the approval you think you need, the direction you need?
Yes, I'll monitor what the county does and put together a letter, and I'll probably put together, put together that letter for the mayor's signature, just because it carries a lot more clout than the city manager.
Okay. We will go to city manager comments. Luke?
I got nothing.
Council comments? We'll start with our outlier, Lynn.
Nothing, thank you.
Bob?
Nothing, thanks.
Bob?
Chad, can you get an update in June with regards to census and where we're at? Because we were over 50% about a month ago, and so, thanks.
Jose?
My only comment about being the outlier on the other side, and, you know, I, I have skin in the game, because today I was, I was Googling all these things from the state of California and all the statistics. Do you know that Hispanic males over the age of 60 with one or two other underlying medical conditions are dying like 53% when they're only, when the Hispanic population only represents 39% of the population? So, so, that's the kind of skin in this game that I have, that even though people that look like me, because males are the ones dying the most too, I'm willing, for the sake of freedom, to not expose myself, because I don't want to expose myself, because I respect this virus, it's a killer. But I believe that it's not one way, we gotta find solutions, like the solution that Lynn brought out, that's the kind of, that's the kind of solutions we need to, to, we'll never normalize until we find some vaccine or some, or some treatment, but that, those are the solutions we need to, to give our people some normalcy. And I think when good minds start thinking to get, thinking the right way, we'll get there.
Jose, I won't be inviting you to come back to New Jersey with me anytime soon then.
I'll kill over.
We're going to be going into closed session. There's going to be two items. One will, there'll be a report back, item 21 and item 22. Item 22 deals with a situation where I have to excuse myself due to a conflict because I am a close personal friend of one of the involved parties. So, we will adjourn the meeting and go into closed session. There'll be a report out?
No, there were not.
Will not be a report out. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.